Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, February 7, 2022, 7:00 PM here in City Hall. The City Council Chambers for the regular meeting of the City Council officially called a meeting to order and asked our city clerk to do the roll call, please.
Before.
Here.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkhouse.
Here.
Kangas.
Present.
Myers.
Here.
Rafi.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
And we also have our guest City Council member, Mr. Ben Withers, with us this evening. If you have any... I think you're at the pleasure of...
Matthew. Yep, yep.
Schneider.
I'm Ben Withers. I live in northwest Waverly here. I'm a furniture sales rep for Southern Furniture Industries, and that's how I know Matthew. And he asked me to join you guys tonight, so I'm glad to be here.
You know the rules.
What's that?
You want off the agenda.
Yeah.
I haven't stolen through them, sorry.
We haven't approved the agenda yet, so.
We're out of work.
There you go.
So you know the rules of engagement? As far as voting, a vote, engage in conversation as you wish, so. Before, with Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Item B is the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion.
Approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Item E is the approval of the amendments. Seek a motion.
I'll move approval of the January 17, 2022, regular meeting minutes and the January 22, 2022, budget session minutes.
Second.
Motion by Drinkhouse, second by Myers. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Already conducted F after B, so we'll move forward to G. Public comments for items not on the agenda this evening. Please leave your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Any public comments this evening? Seeing no one rise to the occasion, we'll move forward with the consent calendar. Item H. Following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item one is to set the public hearing date to set the maximum property tax levy for the fiscal year 2022-23 budget for February 21, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Item two is set the public hearing date for March 21, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall to review the two-minute seal coat program 2022 projects, project plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. Item three is purchase of a computer bundle for 2022 from Bergen KDV of Waterloo, Iowa, for a total of $39,765 for the city of Waverly departments. Item four is a pay request from Farnsworth Group for the Public Services Center North Edition 2021 for the amount of $4,773.20. Item five is a pay request from Farnsworth Group for the First Street Northeast Building renovations for the amount of $2,860.42. Item six is a pay request from Holland Hall Engineers Incorporated for the Ball Youth Fall Fields 2019 Cedar River Park for the amount of $4,171.70. Item seven is a pay request from McClure Engineering Company for the Airport Taxway Connector 2022 for the amount of $8,253. Item eight is a pay request from Snyder and Associates for the Traffic Study 2020 for the amount of $4,522.72. Item nine is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the WELL 5 reconfiguration 2022 for the amount of $6,074.85. Item 10 is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 for the amount of $19,243.92. Item 11 is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the Third Street Southeast Bridge Removal for the amount of $4,799.58. Item 12 is a Class E liquor license for Casey's General Store, number 3763. Item 13 is the ownership update for Casey's General Store, number 3763. Item 14 is a Class C beer permit for Quick Star, number 707. Item 15 is a Class B beer permit for Bremer County Fair Association. Item 16 is a Class C liquor license for Top Two Mexican Grill. And item 17 is the cash dispersments for December of 2021. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Rafi. Counsel discussion, if any.
I just have one question on item eight, which is a pay request for the traffic study. Are we going to be able to see the full traffic study, and if so, when is that going to be available?
I mean, it's 1,000 pages. I can send it to you.
Do you have it?
We should, I believe. Do not like.
Yeah, so we don't need to give you these 900 pages. There is more like an executive summary. A lot of it's just da-da-da-da-da.
Right.
Loads and loads of data, so we can certainly pare that down. The presentation that we gave was basically the final draft version, we're simply waiting for some comments back from the Iowa committee, and I'll follow up with that, but I think that we can receive and make available what's needed, the final version of it. I know that you had some comments regarding two intersections, two locations, as far as the turn lanes. We had submitted those to Snyder for comment. We got a comment back on them, so I can make those available to you as well.
All right. That would be fantastic. Thank you. And the executive summary would be quite all right. I don't need 990 pages of scratch paper.
Anything further with consent calendar? Any other questions? All in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you. Item I, under Regular Business, number one, is presentation by Ms. Paulette Will, who's joining us via Zoom this evening.
Evening. My name is... Did you hear me? Is everyone here?
Yes.
Yep, yep, we're good.
Hi. My name is Paulette Will, and I speak as a former resident of Waverly, Illinois, Waterloo. I was Waverly from 1951 to 1962, so I completely cover the school during that entire time. I'd like to call your attention on the agenda to two items that you can toggle back and forth from. One is the presentation that I made in July, July 30th, for the Human Equity University Commission, and that presentation is in its entirety, and in addition to that is the file from Princeton University MUD library with all the original documentation of the $10,000 grant that we received from the fund for the Republic and the 55. And it is my hope that this evening, this conversation will generate a much wider conversation about the events of 1955 and Captain, Air Force Captain Virgil Daniels and his family, and the $10,000 that Waverly citizens received from the Ford Foundation Fund for the Republic. Those are two conversations, but they're not unrelated. And since we are now a whole week into January, Black History Month, I just wanted to make note of several timely observations. First of all, the events surrounding the subject of my presentation to the Waverly Equity University Commission, namely, how big discrimination, which happened to Captain Virgil Daniels and his family, and for which key leaders in Waverly ultimately apologized, all happened in February of 1955, 67 years ago. Those events are outlined in the presentation. I can go into detail, but if you want to read them, we can have maybe a more meaningful conversation. I think it's pretty clear. But I also wanted to call your attention to your next city council meeting, which is going to be... Well, first of all, Waverly's municipal meeting is tonight on February 7th. February 7th of 1926, Carter J. Woodson, American historian, author, journalist of African-American life and history, initiated the first celebration of Negro History Week, which led to Black History Month, to deepen and extend the study and scholarship of African-Americans all year long. Carter Woodson chose February to celebrate the births of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. And then when you next meet as a city council on February 21st, which is two weeks from tonight, you will be meeting on the 67th anniversary of the Des Moines Register editorial. You look at page five in the presentation. That editorial referred to what happened 67 years ago in Waverly, a lesson of brotherhood. And the entirety of that editorial is on page five in the presentation. If you look at page two, the very first page of the presentation, you will see a Life Magazine article of the events surrounding Captain Daniels and his wife, and I have the original copy of the article. That was published in April 25 of 1955. Full-page article of the Life Magazine, and I found photographs, your photographs, of the award ceremony, and as well as the welcome to Waverly reception. Those photographs shot by Francis Miller, a well-known Life Magazine photographer. And Mr. Miller was known for his World War II photos, and later were his photos of African-Americans, famous and not so famous, including Captain Virgil Daniels and his family. Jack Francis Miller, the Life Magazine reporter and photographer, was so widely known for his body of work in African-Americans. His colleagues named him the nickname "Nemesis." While I have spent the last year in the Des Moines Register, I have come to discover that when you do take on a project like this, things come to your attention and reveal themselves that you would not necessarily have expected. One of the things that I did not expect was, I thought for sure I would know by now what happened to the original... Yep, that was presented to the citizens of Waverly in 1955. I did not have that information. There was no ultimate conclusion to what happened to the $10,000. However, there were three and or four very important individuals in Waverly that made sure that in the first four years after Waverly received that $10,000 grant, that there was a scholarship that was established, and the interest from that scholarship amounted to $300 a year. And you'll find in this report the names of the individuals who did receive those scholarships up through 1955. After that, there was an editorial that was published in the Bremer County Independent Paper, actually advising that the $10,000 could be used for the possible purchase of land for a public hospital to be built on the east side of Waverly. And that editorial is also on page six in the presentation. And because the award was given after residents found housing for Captain Daniels, that money was invested in bonds. It was supposed to be invested in bonds, and I'm reading this from the editorial, and I thought that that would be of better use for the $10,000. After that, the trail, the referendum didn't pass in that national auction deal. There was one more scholarship that was awarded from the Ford Foundation. That scholarship was awarded to Captain, or it was a class A fine, and it's not clear whether or not that those funds came from the fund for the Republic, as the Waverly papers did report that she was the recipient of that, and that's also repaid. So I think that the report is very, very complete in terms of a number of institutions and individuals that were involved in the events in 1955. For example, Richard Wesley, Sherman, Spear, and the mayor, Oz and Pop, and it was clear that they felt that they were doing the right thing, and the Des Moines Register also applauded them for what they put a stop to. And this was all prior to the Civil Rights Act or any, the Voting Rights Act. None of that legislation is on the books, as far as done, pretty much on an ad hoc basis. By the time the Des Moines Register editorial appeared in the paper, February 21st, it caught the attention of national media because at the time, Des Moines Register was part of a bigger network. And so it became an international, a national and international story, and that's why Ford Foundation Fund for the Republic learned about it, awarded Waverly $10,000. It was also reported on CBS Evening News on April 1st by Douglas Edwards and Holden H. Williams, Douglas Edwards. And none of that film footage is probably out there somewhere, but it would take quite a bit of digging to find that footage. So as I said when I introduced myself at the beginning of this presentation, I hope that my presentation, both to the Waverly, Human Equity and University Commission, and to the city council tonight, will generate a wider conversation. And by the way, I neglected to say Heather Boneford and Brian Yergen, because I believe that Brian Yergen at first brought the city council's attention a year ago to Captain Daniels and what had taken place in 1955. So I want to thank both members of that Waverly City Council for allowing me to make this presentation this evening. And I don't know of any questions that you might have. I hope that the report gets forthcoming at the very last page. I've got a list of suggestions that Waverly might consider doing, could consider doing, and I read the minutes of the last Human Equity and University Commission, and I understand that that commission doesn't really have a budget to operate on. And that's unfortunate, because I think that the work that they're engaged in is very, very important. And if there is any way that either the city council can find a way to fund the work of the Human Equity and University Commission, perhaps if the $10,000 is located, just the interest alone on the $10,000 would pay for a small budget to allow the work of the Human Equity and University Commission to move forward. So with that being said, I'm open to any questions that you might have.
I have a question. This is Ann Rothie. Thanks for your presentation. I'm curious as to how long the Daniels family lived in Waverly and what happened to them.
For years.
And do you know where they went from here and what happened to them?
They went to... He was transferred to Otis Air Force Base in Mother's Bay, Massachusetts, and I may came to force violence with joy. There were two children, Virgil Joyce and Wendell. And I know other people in Waverly did as well. Other people had an opportunity to have Captain Daniels. Then he goes to the homes. I posted the photograph in the Life Magazine article, picture from Waverly, who's named members of this, which is on Facebook. And there were 43 comments, and a number of those people remember clearly the events of 1955. But I know more about the photographer Francis Miller than I do about what ultimately happened to Captain Daniels and his family. I believe that he was located to the West Coast, either Santa Clara, California, but... But from there on out, it would take some research, and I think it's doable. But I really believe it would have to be done as a full-fledged project, because his military records would now be available to the public, and they are accessible. But you do have to submit a request for public information, and it does take time. So they were in Waverly for three years.
So this is Brian Bergen. I do appreciate in your presentation, you have the list of things that Waverly could do. And I appreciate being able to look at this and see some actionable items. So this is on the final page of your presentation. I mean, honestly, I don't know how practical it is to figure out where the $10,000 went. We're talking about 60 years ago, and bookkeeping being what it is, I don't know if that's something we can really do. I do like the idea of establishing these scholarships or talking about school curriculum. I also like the idea of expanding the Human Equity and Diversity Library. I think those are things that are very accessible to do. I think anything we can do to give that Human Equity and Diversity Commission, to clarify their role, I mean, they're a fairly new commission, and I think they're still figuring out what they're doing. And I think it's great for you to give them some support and some kind of recognition for the good work that they're doing and continue to do. So I'd like to thank you for looking into this, and thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. I think, you know, I don't live in Waverly, so I can appreciate the fact that the city has a much smaller budget to operate with. So I think that you just have to be very creative to find a way to come up with registration fees and maybe [inaudible] sailors, something like that, I don't know. But I think the work that they're doing is extremely important. I think any conversation that can be had in a public forum should include the commission, because they're a small town, they're part of a small town with a very limited budget, and you never know who might come forward and help fund the [inaudible]. I don't know whether or not they have to be funded, it's supposed to be by public money or not, but, you know, it's very possible that somebody, if there is a larger conversation, some entity with deep pockets might decide to pay some fees for attending Human Equity and Diversity conferences. I understand that there are some very nearby [inaudible].
Paulette, this is Heather Before, and I just want to let you know that I do appreciate your correspondence that we have and your continued persistence and support for the Human Equity and Diversity Commission and bringing this forward.
I did have the file for the Princeton Library file for Waverly, because it didn't come through in the original presentation. And so it's on the agenda page. If that can be added to the library, it's interesting reading. It's just interesting reading. It's an era, it's so far behind, I mean, I was loving it. It's an era when, you know, reporters and people from the east coast couldn't figure out how they're going to get to Waverly in the middle of a blizzard in February. They flew into Chicago, they flew into [inaudible]. And it was a challenge getting from [inaudible] away from it. Not sure how to do it, but I would love to be able to contribute more, like the Life magazine. I'm trying to find the original copy of the photograph, because I think that's an amazing photograph of the history of the photographer, his fascinating career. So I find it, I'll donate it to Waverly. Any other questions?
Anything further?
No.
I don't think at this time, ma'am. I appreciate your—
Okay. Well, I should tell Anne Rossy that I think it's you, not your father, but maybe your grandfather was my grandfather's heart doctor. And I have correspondence from my grandfather to my father, talking about the rest of the [inaudible]. So it's history.
I get that a lot. Thank you. Thank you for mentioning it.
I didn't do that with regard to this, but anyway, I hope you understand that it's not easy living in Minneapolis these days either. We just had another really difficult incident of police brutality. And the reason that I wanted to call your attention to all the events of February is that I was watching a city council meeting for Minneapolis about a week ago, and they are starting all of their committee meetings with an important date in Black History Month, the entire month of February. So the editorial in the Des Moines Register, I think it's pretty interesting on page five. Kind of [inaudible].
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too.
You too. Move on to item number two, which is Resolution 22-09, a resolution in support of local option sales and services tax election for Bremmer County. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 22-09, approving a resolution in support of local option sales and services tax election for Bremmer County.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, if any.
Just, well, so my question of clarification is, I'm assuming this is the funds that's going to pay off the bond paying for the Cedar Parkway Bridge. Is that correct?
This is not us at all.
This is not us at all?
This is county.
This is Bremmer County.
So—
We're locked in until 39.
Okay, so we don't get, we don't have a choice of whether we're stopping or going, so this is just telling the county that we're okay with them doing it for the rest of the county?
Is it—
I believe that's the message.
I'm trying to remember, when we did our local option, we had to let the other cities in the county know that we were doing it, and did we have to have approval from so many of them in order to go put it on you?
It's a certain percentage, and by Bremmer County doing this for just Waverly, we, with being the largest population, we kind of make their percentage for them, so it's easier for them. But yeah, it's just basically support of the local option sales tax for the county, so that funds, those funds can be dispersed.
And the resolution is talking about the expiration of the current tax. I guess since I don't live out in the county, I didn't realize that they have a one-cent local option sales tax also that is county-wide, but that does not apply within our city jurisdiction? Or is that, because it's 7% here, so 6% is a regular sales tax, 1% is a local option sales tax.
Right.
Does any of that go to the county?
That's our local option sales tax. The county has their local option sales tax. So that's a way of, when you divvy it up, how that would go. So no, it is not, compared to what we're doing here. It would not lower it to 5% if we both did not have our local option sales tax, I don't believe.
I think what Rod is talking about is the overlap, since Waverly is in the county—
Yeah.
—that we have a penny, they have a penny, why isn't it eight then?
I'm saying, I don't think it works like that.
Right.
So this is basically for tax, if I was out at, like, Bremmer Station or going out to, you know, Cliff's Place in Horton, that's where this would apply?
Right.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Pretty much unincorporated areas. So, any other questions, comments? Hearing that? Carl?
Before.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
A vote of seven to zero and zero absent, Resolution 22-09 is approved. Item three is Resolution 22-10, a resolution approving a plative survey to create parcel G located at 2574 Cottage Avenue in Jamesville, Iowa. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 22-10, approving a plative survey to create parcel G located at 2574 Cottage Avenue, Jamesville, for Robert Steffen and Mary Creach.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion.
I was just curious as to where this is exactly.
It's at 2574 Cottage.
Right. I got that.
It's kind of south and a little west of Waverly.
Okay.
So if you know where the Shawrock River access is, kind of southwest of town, you go south from there.
So the reason this came to us is because it's within that two mile.
Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
A vote of seven to zero with zero absent, Resolution 22-10 is approved. Item number four is Resolution 22-11, a resolution approving a plative survey to create parcel BB and parcel CC located at 940 Cedar Lane in Waverly, Iowa.
I'll move approval of Resolution 22-11, approving a plative survey to create parcel BB and parcel CC located at 940 Cedar Lane, Waverly, Iowa, for Harold and Sarah Peterson.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, and I'll make just a note that Petersons have joined us in the audience this evening, if need be, for any clarifications. Any comments, questions concerned by the council?
Looks like this was unanimously approved by P&amp;Z, so.
Yep.
I don't know if Pete wants to make a comment.
I was asking him if I should protest.
Correct.
All right, hearing nothing further, we'll move forward with the roll call vote.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
A vote of seven to zero with zero absent, Resolution 22-11 is approved. Thank you for joining us this evening as well. Item number five is Resolution 22-12, a resolution approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Mason City, Iowa, for the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension 2021 Project. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 22-12, approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Mason City, Iowa, for the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension 2021 Project for an additional not-to-exceed amount of $6,200.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Counsel discussion.
I went out and took a look at this, and it appears that this right-of-way might be the old Highway 3 right-of-way. Is that true? Because there's obviously a right-of-way that runs along where the proposed trail would be. So I'm assuming that there would be no property acquisition costs on this?
I think it's correct.
Okay. I think it makes a lot of sense. It's a good place to put the trail.
So it sounds like they wanted to move it just so it's not right on the curve. It was thought to be safer to move it. I still have concerns about riding your bike down the side of Highway 3, but, you know, but yeah, definitely looks like it's better than crossing at the, right at the curve. And this is just for the additional engineering costs, is that correct, for design?
That's correct. I have drawings, if you're interested in looking at them. This took, set us back four to six months because of the review process. We even got the DOT engaged in trying to come up with a solution, and we were unable to come up with something that we felt was a good way to cross pedestrians at the intersection of Heritage Way and [inaudible]. We're better off moving the pedestrian crossing, the bicycle crossings away from the intersection.
What kind of a crossing do you anticipate is going to end up there? And I wonder how, you know, once development, I don't know that development will be right there with the land sale. Will it be to the west a little bit, or? I can't remember what.
Yeah, there's not going to be development right on the spot.
Right there, yeah.
I wouldn't think. And the photos, including, you go to the last page of what's provided online, you see this very photo.
Yep, so we're going to be on the north side of 10th Avenue, but in this location here is where we're going to cross. We'll have standard advanced signage, noting that this is where the pet crossing and bike crossing is. We will have the bars going across the roadway, the painted bars, design that. We are not doing the flashing beacon in this location, so we just don't anticipate a whole lot of activity at this time. When we transition here, we're going to come across, there'll be a pet ramp, a technical warning, but then this is where we will transition to using the existing driveway access and resurfacing it with a finer aggregate more suitable for, like, a cross bike or gravel bike, you know, those types of things. This is the northern natural gas town station. There's, over here, there is a field access into the farm, and there's also another field access right here to get into the farm here. That's one of the compelling reasons why we do not want to pave it, is because if there are grain wagons or heavy farm equipment, we're concerned that it's just going to damage or destroy a hard surface, because trying to design, you know, oversized a paved trail for that would not be cost-effective. And then we get over here to the first driveway. This used to be the Neil Smith Farm, that right next to the driveway is where we would cross. We have excellent visibility, again, advanced signage, so if you go like Highway 3 East or by Pine Street, we have a pet crossing there of East Bremer. Nice thing here, it's only two lanes as opposed to the three lanes. So again, this is an excellent location. This is not really for foot traffic, because we're transitioning to the paved shoulders, where it tended to really be more or less bike lanes, and this is for much more experienced cyclists, once you get out onto Highway 3. So this is a section of the roadway that has been kind of obliterated. We're going to have to kind of redesign that, rebuild that. We think we can do that economically, and that's why we're talking about the design work. So I think we have a good option going forward, because it is shared with farm equipment occasionally. It is not eligible for federal funding, and so this section will be at the city's cost. And it's reasonable, we're estimating somewhere around $25,000 to $30,000 to create this private section.
I'm very concerned about the crossings on both ends here. Number one, because of the speed of traffic there. And I mean, I see some people crossing on bikes, walking, and traffic, cars not paying I have witnessed a few accidents, even up further with 16th and 10th, the crossing and stuff there. I see kids crossing that road, so I'm really concerned about the crossing and where they're at and the speed along this road, not— and where they're at and the speed along this road, not just on 10th, but, you know, Parkway, we did get an email about that as well, all the way up there by the new baseball diamonds as well, so, which again is a different part of this road, but the crossings just make me cringe. We do need to finish this sidewalk, which I'm assuming this is in addition to the 10th trail, right? This whole trail is just addition to the 10th that we're doing, we're continuing the 10th sidewalk.
This is the end of it, from westernmost section?
Because there's no, it doesn't continue from 16th to 3 at all right now, there's no walking anyway, so it is, we're adding that plus this now, is what you're saying.
Yes, this is the Rolling Prairie Trail Corridor, the designated route that goes from, you know, Reedland through Waverly, the route that they have developed to Shell Rock, and again, your concerns are concerns as well. But the planning and the design has been vetted by the DOT as well. And just as they initiated creating the bike lanes on Highway 3 as a viable corridor to get across, again, some of these sections are higher degree of skill for the bicyclists, you're not going to take an eight or nine-year-old out onto the paved shoulders, you're going to take them from Waverly and head east.
Is the speed limit on 10th right there, is that 35 for that section or 45?
On the curve is 35, yes, on the west end.
Okay.
And we're bound to connect that too, aren't we, but some mechanism that they are, do we agree to connect this for the state, is there?
We have a $184,000 grant, federal grant, to assist with completing, this is the last section of the Rolling Prairie Trail Corridor.
We're not bound to do it, we applied to do it on our own to make that connection, so we weren't the only gap, but there's nobody forcing us to do it, it was just something that was applied for and received.
If we do not agree to create this connection, and basically say, well, let's just end it, you know, on the east end of this, they're going to say that's no longer a viable project and they're going to withdraw the funding, and it's going to go back to the COG to redistribute, so.
So from that aspect, we're bound, but.
Yeah.
And I mean, this is part of this federal program, I mean, the bike lane's going to go all the way to Seattle, and it's crazy, and I think, you know, we got some good parts out of the bike lane, I don't really like the crossing either, but I don't think, there's going to be a lot of people crossing it there, and it seems like it's just something we have to do because we're somewhat bound by it.
Yeah, the option, the second option is, is we just withdraw the project. But again, to your point, your concerns are concerns to the DOT concerns, and this is why we are on the fourth iteration of trying to find a way to get across, the first three were just not deemed to be a good option to cross at the intersection itself.
Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Hengus?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
A vote of seven to zero with zero absent, Resolution 22-12 is approved. Item number six is Resolution 22-13, a resolution approving Iowa DOT change order number one, accepting the First Street Northwest Reconstruction 2021 Project as complete, approving pay estimate number 2A and approving pay estimate number five as the final pay request. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 22-13 approving Iowa DOT change order number one in the amount of an $8,058.61 increase, accepting the First Street Northwest Reconstruction 2021 Project as complete, approving pay estimate number 2A in the amount of 30 cents to correct an underpayment discrepancy on the check request for pay estimate number two, and approving pay estimate number five in the amount of $38,178.05 as a final pay request to Lodge Construction, Inc. of Clarksville, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Rothie, council discussion.
I always try and learn things, I see things that come up, and there was a term here that I thought was rather interesting, if you could very briefly explain it to me, what is an abandoned induct bank? Says there's an abandoned duct bank that was removed.
Yes, so a duct bank, think of, so this had to do with Waverly Utilities that come across the river underground, and so they would have had conduits that would have been bundled and then encased in concrete. Okay, so those conduits are the duct, and so you have a bundling of them, which is your bank, and it's encased in concrete.
And it was something that wasn't needed, wasn't used anymore?
It was just abandoned in place, and it was discovered, and it was something that just needed to be dealt with.
It's just leftover junk that was sitting underground we need to get rid of?
It was, it was a conflict, and yes, we had to deal with it.
Okay. Now I know something new.
We still install them today, duct banks.
Not the abandoned variety.
Not the abandoned variety, but it's still a terminology that's used today, so.
Not to be confused with the duck pond.
Yes.
I thought you were going to explain the whole billing discrepancy, that's what I was looking forward to when you started talking.
No, 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 I do have other things to do this week, so.
All right, hearing no further discussion, roll call, Carla.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
She was.
Vote of seven to zero, zero absent, Resolution 22-13 is approved. Item number seven is Resolution 22-14, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Waverly and Modern Design Architects for design work for improving and remodeling the north section of the Parks Maintenance Building. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 22-14 approving an agreement between the City of Waverly and Modern Design Architects Incorporated of Jamesville, Iowa for design work for improving and remodeling the north section of the Parks Maintenance Building for the amount of $17,200.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Drinkow, council discussion.
I think this is much needed. The building could use some sprucing up and new bathrooms and nice workspace and.
Yeah, go stop out there if you have questions, why?
I will buy it regularly.
It's pretty tough shape.
Yeah.
Blue building, a brand-new facility, this was the most equitable way to do it, and so we're starting that process. You funded half of the construction a year ago, the second half is in the budget this year. This will at least get the first, hopefully half to two-thirds of the main building done, and then the rest of it's not quite as complicated, it's more storage and et cetera. And now the building across from that one has been vacated with the new public works addition, that building, then it can also start to be remodeled for equipment storage, et cetera, so we're recreating a headquarters in place instead of building a new one, and this is a much more feasible way to do it, year by year, piece by piece.
And I presume the staff will be in on the plans just to make sure they have what they need in that space?
Yep, absolutely. We've already talked pretty extensively with Paul, ground maintenance supervisor, you know, what we need out of that building and looking towards the future as well.
Good.
All right, hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Hengus?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero, zero absent, Resolution 22-14 is approved. Item number eight is Resolution 22-15, a resolution approving the purchase of a new vinyl split rail fence from American Fence Company for the Waverly Municipal Golf Course. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 22-15 approving the purchase of a new vinyl split rail fence from American Fence Company of Johnston, Iowa for the purchase price of $24,462.45 for the Waverly Municipal Golf Course.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen, council discussion.
Well, I know they've been talking about this for, since I was on the golf commission, which was a few years ago, so I think it's sorely needed, and it's going to cover several holes, it looks like, not just the, along the street, but in other spots too, from what it looked like.
Correct, this will be replacing everything that's up there already. The wood split rail fence will all be gone, all replaced with vinyl.
And what color?
White.
White.
That's the plan, anyway, we'll see if we can get white split rail fence when it's time.
Right.
Well, it's part of the decision in talking with Garrett, you know, normally we would have split this over a few seasons too, but now that we have contractors that might be able to do it, materials that might be there, it's a lot of mites, but with the way things are right now, we're doing what we can when we can, because to hold off the other $8,000 until July, it made no sense, it was really six of one, so we're going to just get it all done now, although I don't know when we're going to be able to start, when materials even going to come in, it's, we'll see. But you can see the fence pictures, it's definitely split rail, it's split everywhere, it's horrible. Rotting posts, it's due, it's been due for a long time.
Well, I would imagine we'll have an easier time getting a contractor for a large job than two small ones.
Mobilization costs, et cetera, if we can get the materials or something.
I was going to say, and that's one thing to point out though, too, is it is going to be our staff that's installing it.
Okay.
We just need to get the stuff here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm usually not a real big fan of vinyl fencing, but I think in this situation, it makes a lot of sense, it's going to last longer, I think, than having the wood fencing, and, yeah, I agree that the fence right now is an eyesore, it needs to be replaced.
Yep.
The nice thing about the vinyl too is it can, you can take it down and you can move it if the need arises.
And I think there've been a lot of improvements in vinyl fencing, I mean, you've seen them with big holes knocked in them and that kind of thing, I think, and you haven't provided us with a picture of the vinyl fence.
It's going to look a lot better than the pictures that I did give you. But it'll look, it's going to be the same, it should be the same makeup, you know, the two split rails between two posts, that's what it'll be.
I'm sure it will look fantastic and will be very durable.
Yes.
All right, hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Schneider?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Hengus?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero with zero absent, Resolution 22-15 is approved. Item nine is Resolution 22-16, a resolution proposing the sale of three parcels of land owned by the City of Waverly and setting a public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 22-16 proposing the sale of three parcels of land, described as parcel M, parcel 0904300015, and parcel N, parcel 0904300013, and parcel O, parcel 090430016, owned by the City of Waverly to the buyer, Waverly Holdings LLC of Waverly, Iowa, and sets a public hearing for February 21st, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall, and directs the clerk to publish notice of the hearing in conformance with state law. And I might have left a zero out in parcel O, should be 0904300016.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Before?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Hengus?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero, Resolution 22-16 is approved. Item number 10 is the first reading of Ordinance 1098 and Ordinance amending Chapter 105, traffic code by repealing and replacing Section 105.10, off-road utility vehicles of the Waverly Municipal Code and setting a public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1098 and Ordinance amending Chapter 105, traffic code by repealing and replacing Section 105.10, off-road utility vehicles of the Waverly Municipal Code and setting February 21st, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Schneider, council discussion.
I just wanted to tell Chief Purcell I appreciated the work he put into this memo, was very informative, and I would encourage any citizen interested in this issue to read it, whether they're in favor, opposed, or undecided, because it was very thorough and very helpful.
Anything further?
I just have one question. I've tried to gather as much information as possible on the pending bill going through the state, and if I'm understanding it correctly, that would, if that passes, that would allow these vehicles to be used on state highways. Would that compel us then to allow them on the state highways in our city limits?
I can't really speak on what compels you to vote or not vote, so I really can't answer that.
No, not to vote, I'm saying if that bill passes, is that a blanket?
Are they permitted within the city automatically because of that?
Thank you.
Chief, you would.
So in your options, that was one that I gave you as for House File 800, and in that, it would, but there has been a successor bill already that I think came out like two days after I wrote this, so it's not, it's like House File 1031, no, but there is a successor bill where it removed the city street, so what would be, right now, how we describe that the state doesn't allow it, but counties and cities are allowed, the way the House File is written now is that it's including state and counties in the stability, it does not, so we'd be in the same position if that passes, that we are today.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if that passes, I think the latest thing I could find was an interview with Bobby Kaufman, and he was saying, I'm working on some amendments, but I couldn't find any specifics, am I understanding correctly, so if that passes, then the counties won't have a choice, but cities still will?
That's correct, the language they insert is that the board supervisors are not allowed to, I just got my own present.
Oh, not allowed to restrict?
Yeah.
Right. They remove the home rule for counties, but not the cities.
Huh.
That's the blunt part of it.
But as a council, you'll, today you're facing the same decision that passes or not, that you will be doing.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Bergen?
No.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Hengus?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
And before?
Yes.
On a vote of five to two with zero absent, the first reading of Ordinance 1098 is approved. Go forward with Section K, reports from boards and commissions, item number one is golf commission minutes of December 14th of 2021. Item number two is Bremer Waverly Law Board minutes of January 10th of 2022, both received into the record. Turn to Mr. Browner for staff updates, if any.
Garrett has a brief update tonight, sir.
Thank you.
Just another quick reminder that we have the Candlelight Ski this weekend, Saturday, Saturday the 12th, it's going to run from 5:00 to 7:00, we're still in need of some volunteers, so if anyone wants to volunteer for setup, takedown, or the all-time best thing to do is make the hot chocolate, let me know, and we'll get you set up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all we have tonight, sir.
Thank you. We'll move forward with city council comments, and as usual, we'll start, Mr. Bergen.
I would like to invite anyone who'd like to discuss city business with me to join me for a beer afterwards, I will be at the beach house.
Excellent, Ms. Wilford?
Just a comment on the speed reduction, you know, possibly doing a speed reduction on Parkway and 10th. I've just, I take that way frequently to go to my mother's home, and I see the crossings and I witness cars just.
I've just, I take that way frequently to go to my mother's home, and I see the crossings and I witness cars just blowing right through those lights. So I just want to caution pedestrians, number one, but also people that are driving, be very careful in those sections. I witnessed accidents on 10th and 16th, or I've seen the aftermath of accidents on 10th and 16th, and I really would be in support of a speed reduction on the Parkway and 10th. I'm not sure how we should go about that, but I know we did receive an email today regarding speed reduction, so just be really careful when you drive and watch for people crossing. It's going to get even more busy during the summer and when the Ball Diamonds open. On 10th and 16th, it is already very busy with school letting out and just morning and that afternoon busy time, frequent accidents, so I just am afraid somebody's going to get very hurt at some point, so, thank you.
All right, Ms. Bergin.
Nothing tonight.
All right. Ms. Myers?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Schneider?
To follow along with what Heather said, I was going to make a comment as well on Cedar River Parkway and 10th, because I do think that we need to look at a speed reduction there, so how we go about that, I'm not sure, but, you know, just on crash data, 2016 and 2017, DOT had five crashes on that corridor for two years, not five and five, five for the two years, so two and a half a year. And 2021, and the one month that I pulled up, 2022, so 13 months, not a same time comparison, but we had 20. So you got a fourfold increase in crashes there. And I know that the DOT loves to like, say these road diets magically disappear the crashes, but they take the traffic. They moved over 1,000 cars into this area that we're talking about, that we're dealing with, and I'm concerned because the DOT never flagged us on this problem, and it's a very expensive problem for us as a city to have, and so I think we need to take a look at that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Drinkow?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Withers?
I learned a lot tonight. I'd like to thank Matthew for inviting me, and I enjoyed it, so.
Absolutely, we'll see you in two weeks. Mr. Kangas?
I would just encourage citizens that are interested or intrigued by the ORB ordinance to take a look at what's on there, because it does take three readings to pass this, so we've got the first reading out, and so we have the public hearing coming up for people to actually really take a look at it and give us some feedback on that.
Thank you, sir. Only thing that I had is on Saturday, I had the privilege of going with the speech team up to Decorah. It was, you know, a lot of people, I drove the bus, but going is probably not one of the most spectacular things to sit through, rather than a cheering football game or basketball game or whatever. But anyway, there were seven entries, and I observed almost all of them from our Waverly Shellrock speech team, and out of that, they've got, their scores were, six of them came back with ones and one came back with two. And the coach, Lisa Fife, shared with me this evening the final results that come in on the Monday after for this speech qualifications for all-state speech. One of the improvs and their radio broadcasting, there's 10 kids in those two groups that were invited to compete at the state level beyond the regional state qualifying rounds that were this last Saturday. So that's a great accomplishment, and it was interesting, we were talking, some of the students and I and the coach, and just the impact that, you know, a speech class has as you endeavor to maybe be an elected official, just conduct business with other human beings. It was a great thing, and I give a little bit of a shout out to Kway for their help in doing the radio broadcasting piece of it, Matt Ray in particular. So great work with all of them. It's not just athletes that we want to pat on the back and say, good game, good speech. So with that, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Bergen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pounce the same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.